Before we start, I'd like to welcome the new council, especially our new representatives, Sandy and Bill. It's been a heavy year and we look forward to a long four-year working relationship. Throw call please.
Mayor, how you doing?
Here.
I'm John Doug.
Here.
I'm Fred Gray.
Here.
I'm Woman Kathy Hout.
Here.
I'm Kenny Morgan.
Here.
Senator Sarah Hurst.
Here.
Senator Susan Scott.
Here. Thank you, Janine. Item three is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Do you have those in your notebook and had an opportunity to look over them? Do you have any additions or corrections, or do we have a motion to approve as is?
I might motion to approve.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate the saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear no. Item four, just for about one minute, John F. has talked to myself, several of the council members about the situation. He has a previous obligation. I'm gonna let him have about a minute or two to go over what he would like to.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Talking about hell.
Can you go with the mic?
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity. This is all going on, it's been going on for several years and I've approached their code enforcement officers about it. Problems about dirty lots, basted lots, water running down the streets, probably sewer water, and at my end, I don't know where to go. I understand we've got codes in place for enforcement, and I've been told that we don't have. So, I would like to ask the board to get on this because I understand the community being trashed simply because people want to put their trash in the garbage cans and they elect to throw things out. Now, I understand rundown houses, people can't afford to fix their homes up the way they need to and spend the money. But when a garbage truck runs through your house and you're too frightened to throw your trash down, some penalty ought to be given to these people. Locks will be grabbing the bull by the horns, and I think it's time we did this because our town's small and it ought to be more presentable to people coming through here than it is. And I'm asking the board tonight to sign on and pursue this thing and get it done. It's no big deal. It's just a matter of saying, "We're gonna do it," and get it done. You are the people. And I've heard we'll have to go to planning commission. That's bull too. I don't believe that. You are legislative people, and you can do it. Do the job. It's just a matter of you saying, "We're gonna get it done," and we want our code enforcement officer to do what he's obligated to do.
Thank you, Thomas. I would suggest that we put this on the workshop agenda that we have on the Tuesday before the council meeting, and also, Mark, is he in here?
Yes, sir.
It might be good that you get all of us a copy of the codes and how the enforcement goes in advance so that everybody can be looking over those. And if we don't have teeth in it, I think we need to kind of similar to the planning commission situation where I've requested that they look at some of the sign ordinances, and they are in the process of working on that to alleviate some of the things in there that's absolutely not necessary.
Mayor, one thing that, I don't know if this is what John F. was referring to, but it came to my attention that sometimes our city courts have been under the assumption that they could only fine a person $50, which is, you know, if somebody commits an offense that might be ongoing for a year, they could only fine them $50. But the courts have come down and I think the, in fact, the Attorney General issued an opinion that stated that the property owner could be fined $50 per day for any violation, which is, would be a very stiff penalty if somebody repeatedly violated one of our ordinances. So, that's one thing we can look at.
Okay.
The penalties seem to be more strict than what we probably caught in the past, which would help us enforce any ordinances that need enforced.
I was talking, it's severe, it's not here. It's just a matter of saying, "We're gonna do it," you know?
Okay. Item five is communications from City Administrator Scott Cock.
Mayor, council, you all have in your notebooks reports from Newport Fire Department, Parks and Recreation, safety report, streets, police, detective reports, planning and code department, Cock County Partnership Report, and also handed out tonight was the animal control report, animal shelter. Couple of quick issues to address. Again, hats off to Ben Hicks and the rest of the employees with the street department. Very tough week we've had, and yet they kept our robes in relatively great shape, especially under the circumstances. So, just want to compliment all the workers that was out there working so hard for us. Last, or another issue is we've been discussing to have a retreat, and we spoke on this at the workshop, and I'd just like to have more input on what date and the location that the council would wish, mayor and council would wish to have that. It was kind of tentatively scheduled for January 29th, but there are some conflicts with that. So, while we're all together, I'd just like to get a consensus on when and where we want to do it.
Would February 5th work?
Good for me.
Anybody got a problem with that? Okay. February 5th, and my suggestion would be to have it here at the City House.
I had a suggestion. I went to Sunset Gap Community Center. It's private, it's, I think that the cost was $30. Scott wanted to do lunch or whatever we do, they will prepare it. I think he told me for $6 apiece. And that's a lunch or breakfast, whatever we do, have it over there. That would be my suggestion. It's private, I think it gets out in the community a little bit. The thing that I've done here, we've had it a couple times, I mean, it's okay for men to get out and do something and be a part of the community too. But I've never been to Sunset Gap. It's a good place to visit, and I think it's a good opportunity for us to get out and have support from the local, especially non-bosses.
Is that in form of a motion?
Yes, it needs to be.
Okay.
We need a motion, but should we do one?
Not really. Don't necessarily. We need a consensus, so.
Anybody in disagreement?
Only, all the thing that I have is, I'm not sure I could come to Newport from Sunset Gap to make a death call. I just can't, I don't know if I could go, if I could do that. I just don't know. Since the situation that's been on then, I can't hardly go there.
Any other comments?
If that's a conflict, I mean, I'm finally out here.
Maybe because of the way the weather's been. Maybe have February 5th one here and then tried to do our spring one in Sunset Gap.
Get off, yeah.
Next time, maybe.
Are you okay with that?
Because that is such a great facility.
What time will that start?
Well, again, this is your office decision, but my tentative schedule has us coming in here and starting at 8:00.
Okay.
With the welcome and coffee, and then the sessions will start at 8:15.
Okay.
You may move the seat.
Is that open?
Yeah, this is open.
Yes, it is open to the public.
And of course, we'll be sending out reminders and the retreat packet, in other words, to where everybody will have full information on the itinerary and everything.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mayor. Sorry.
Thank you, Scott. Under item six, appointment to boards, item A is include Newport Regional Planning Commission members. One of those is the mayor's position, and then there's one appointed to the board. And I would like to make a recommendation that Johnny Bug serve on that planning commission with the council's approval, and that's open for discussion or a motion to accept that recommendation.
Does Johnny have a problem with that?
No.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate the saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear no. Item two is, two of the aldermen, several alderwomen must serve on the utilities board. And of course, that is a paid position, and I would, as the mayor, I'd like to recommend Kenny Morgan and Johnny Bug be the two representatives from the board, and that's left up to council if you won't agree with that or make other appointments.
I have a suggestion.
Yes.
Since Bill Costner got the most votes, and he has the most experience with the utilities, wouldn't he be better suited for that position?
Okay, you can nominate him.
I will nominate Bill.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion or nominations?
Well, Mayor, we're filling two positions, and we've got Mr. Fugid here, and we need to appoint one person to one position and know which, what the term is. And Ron, if you can lighten this on that, we've talked about it, but since then.
The way the, the terms for city aldermen, the terms are really six years, but the two aldermen that run after are serving a six-year term. So, both of their terms end with their term of office, which is the head of the election. And then that means there's two vacant positions on the board. It's up to the former mayor and aldermen to select one of those positions. As it turns out, whoever you appoint will serve for a remainder of the term which ends this office. Then their term on the board, then the man on the ball, and then either one of them or someone else to have a certain term.
But do both positions end, did I forget?
Yes.
Okay.
That is not the way the charter reads.
That's not the way the charter states.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
No, I got charter in my car.
How do you read the charter?
It says two, replace every two years, you swap.
Rotates.
Rotates every two years. I've got, the charter, I guess, calling, you should.
True. That's very true. It does say that in the charter.
I think that's correct.
The first time that this was available, we put council members on, in the appointments that were made at that time, I appointed, and I had discussed this openly with the council, to maybe serve one year, and then after that, another term of a year or whatever, so that everybody that's on the council during their four-year term would get an opportunity to serve.
I mean, maybe I've read the wrong charter, but what I read on the charter was, the charter was changed. It said, "One of the seven, at least one of the seven members will be a member." So, that's all it says. One of the seven members. They would be appointed for a certain term, like anyone else. It says if, or until their term of office has an altermate end, when their term of office is an altermate end, that ends that term. But they're still serving, because initially, this is why I remember, initially there were two people appointed, once the charter was changed, to stand aboard the seven, and two from, two aldermen were appointed. I think one of those was signed, and someone was appointed in their place to serve out the remainder of that term. And another one, I'm not sure, but there was two positions, and then, I don't know, Dennis was appointed to serve out while I was president. But I, 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 since I read the chart, I didn't remember any oscillations, but it just said they were appointed for a term, a term for six years, but if their term of office is an altermate, you know, ends that their term on the board.
The way I read the charter, the appointed terms are for six years, but with the alderman, whose mayor can select two, and they serve a two-year term, and then they rotate.
Yes, we will. Of course, it's a long period, but we'll, since we need to be sure, let's go, it says, "The board for the purposes of operating and administering the waterworks plant system, electric distribution system, city Newport, and other such public utilities included in the sewer system as may now be on or thereafter required for city Newport, there is hereby created administrative board to be known as the Newport Utilities Board. The board shall consist of seven members, each of whom shall be a qualified voter of Newport, Tennessee. Each member shall serve a term of six years and be elected by the majority vote of the board of mayor and aldermen for the city of Newport." That's the first paragraph. The second paragraph says, "At least one member of the Newport Utilities Board elected by the board of mayor and aldermen of the city of Newport must be a current member of the board of mayor and aldermen, and such member is not precluded from voting on the matters of the member's election to the board of public utilities. When the board member's elected term of office on the board of mayor and alderman expires, such member's membership in the Newport Utilities Board likewise expires, and the board position shall be vacant until filled by the board of mayor and aldermen for a period extending until the completion of the six-year term of office. At such time, the board of mayor and alderman may elect a new member from among their body, or may reinstate the existing member for a new six-year term." So, that appears to be what we're doing.
Have you read all of it?
No, no, we, that's not all of it. "Any vacancy in the membership of the board shall be filled for the unexpired term by majority vote by the board of mayor and aldermen. Compensation for members of the Newport Utility Board shall be set by the board of mayor and aldermen of the city of Newport. In meetings of the board, four members shall constitute a quorum, and all actions of the board shall be approved by majority vote by those members present at the meeting. The board shall take the oath of office prescribed for judges of the state of Tennessee. Members of the board shall be removed from office only by general ousted proceedings for the causes appropriate to such proceedings. The Newport Utilities Board created by this section shall elect one of its members as chairman and shall appoint a treasurer, excuse me, a secretary, who may, if desired, be one of the members of the board. The treasurer of the city of Newport shall act as treasurer of the Newport Utilities Board in an ex officio capacity and shall not have a vote in the board. The board shall pick some place, a time of which it shall have regular meetings to be held, and may adopt such rules and bylaws for the conduct of its business as it deemed fit and proper. The Newport Utilities Board shall have complete charge and control of the waterwork plants and systems, and electric distribution systems for all other public utilities, including the sewer system, as may now be on or thereafter required for the city of Newport, Tennessee, and to that end, may employ a superintendent and other employees and fix trades and enter into contracts to generally operate and administer such public utilities aforementioned, complete, retrieved from the control or supervision of the board of mayor and aldermen of the city of Newport, Tennessee, provided only that in the operation of such utilities and the fixing of breaks, the Newport Utilities Board shall observe all covenants and agreements entered into or made by the board of mayor and aldermen under the provisions thereof at the time of the organization of laws. The Newport Utilities Board shall possess the powers, rights, and privileges and perform the same duties and functions as the present board of public utilities." I'm trying to see, there's two more paragraphs. It doesn't seem to have anything to do with what we're talking about, but I'll read them. "The Newport Utilities Board shall have all the powers, rights, privileges, and perform the same duties and functions as a board of public utilities, created by chapter 497, the private acts of the General Assembly of the state of Tennessee, to year 1939, it being the intentional legislature of that one board to which the Utilities Board shall operate, administer the waterworks, plants, system, and electric distribution system of the city of Newport. The operation of the waterworks plant system of the city of Newport and the service of any other utility owned by the city and the rates imposed for services rendered and water furnished by the utility and system shall not be subject to regulation by the Tennessee Regulatory Authority of any other state regulatory administrative board."
And you're good at treating on that page. It just indicated one, didn't it?
It said we can't appoint. It said one must be.
Okay.
It could be.
There are twenty-two. Someone be an odd number serving on the board.
No, no, there's seven on the board.
The language is, "At least."
At least one.
We could appoint all five.
Oh, we could appoint all five of y'all to the board if there were five vacancies.
Yes.
Don't you agree?
Yes.
And you could do what?
But there's two vacancies now, and we, and we have to fill one with a member of the board. We certainly can't fill two if that's what y'all want to do.
Well, it says, and I, I read, it says two, and they alternate every, just for two years, and then you reappoint, then more after two years.
I have read that too, Bill, and I'm trying to remember who that could have been.
Well, that's in the book they give us, because I've read everything in it.
That was the whole rest that night, Bill. I believe something that the board of aldermen and the society's to do is not to do anything, but I don't believe it. I don't know. That's in, that's the charter.
Correct.
It's up to the board as to how they want those members to serve, I think. But that's the way the charter.
Yeah, well, and basically, I mean, as I recall, and y'all can refresh my memory, the mayor thought, like Scotty said, that it would be best to alternate the terms. So, in effect, when what, even though they were appointed for a six-year term, they basically resigned so that we could appoint another alderman.
Well, it says just a two-year term. It's two, a two-year term. That way you get four. The last bunch was there for about three, four years. And according to your charter it says, supposed to rotate every two years.
You've got that nomination, you've got that works out.
I've got my book. Can I go out and get my book?
Here's what I, here's what I would suggest. Since there's this much information, I think we need to.
Be sure.
Be sure, let Terry do some research on this, or.
Go over what Bill's got.
Okay.
I just got the book that Mr. Cock gave me.
Right. So, I would suggest that we put this off till we know for sure what we're doing, and there's not any question about it, because we don't want to do something that's not according to, and if we've got mistakes or whatever, we probably need to get those corrected.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that's not where.
It's in the.
This book.
Thirty-three.
Does this?
Okay. It's, I believe what alderman Costner's talking about, there is probably, in addition to the charter, under the municipal codes, they may be. Yeah, someone of the municipal codes on the computer, and we could change everything with the Energy Act of 1935, which you can do with the whole board, or you can, on the board. It's, you know, it's got a lot that we can do. And also stayed in there, and this was done on the charter revision of 2005, that states in there, "You're supposed to change every two years." And this wasn't done until last time, but they, oh, two for two years, and those two come off, and two more goes on.
That's correct. I read it.
I'd be glad to look at it.
It's, it's in the book that Mr. Cock gave me.
But, but of course, the bottom line is, the charter's why we gotta go by it.
No, that's the charter. That's what it says.
I'd be glad to look at it. Well, does it have anything to do with putting someone on the board?
Is it an emergency that they're being sent on the board right now?
I would, I would suggest, I mean, even if it's a four-year term, you're gonna appoint somebody, that's our two years, if that's the way that comes out.
We need to appoint somebody. It's just about now. It's a matter of how.
I think there's lots of issues, you know, one big issue going on with the board that they could be doing, and she's getting one.
Could we probably do that at next Tuesday's meeting, or should it be done at that?
It could be.
And then.
It could be really. I mean. We have a special call meeting next Tuesday morning at 9:00 to discuss the transfer station and the rural development loan resolution. This could certainly be added on. We have adequate public notice. Today's Thursday. That meeting's not until Tuesday. So, if the board so chose, we could add this issue to the agenda if that would give Terry enough time to research.
Well, I, I mean, like we've already stated, it's just a matter of how long the term is right now. We know there's two vacancies. This board has the authority to fill those two vacancies. One of them has to be with a member of this board.
Since it's the city money paying the board member, and it is compensated by the taxpayers, don't you think it should be an open meeting?
Yeah, it will be an open.
It will be an open meeting that morning.
Okay, he said workshop.
No, it's, it's a call meeting.
It's a call meeting.
To approve that wastewater, I mean, not the wastewater, the transfer station.
No.
But I mean, y'all want to go ahead and vote. We could go ahead and vote on what's been recommended tonight.
Absolutely.
So.
We need to vote to vote.
No.
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda. See, better get on the nominee.
Well, we need to fill them position by position.
Position by position. Okay.
There's two positions open.
Okay.
If, if the council wants to go forward.
Okay.
Let's fill it by position by position.
Well, I'll go ahead, and since one position has to be filled first, that's a requirement, I'll go ahead and make the, the recommendation that Kenny Morgan fill that position, and we'll just open the floor back up for other nominations with that position.
That's a nomination for that, for the first position. So, if we needed, anybody else can.
No, we're gonna make a motion on his.
He's, the mayor has nominated Kenny Morgan. This, we need to ask if there's any other nominations.
Can anybody make the nomination?
Absolutely.
I made one. I'll nominate Bill.
Okay. Any other nominations?
That's for the first.
That's for this position, that's for sure.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's need now.
Call it seat one for the.
Seat one.
Seat one.
Okay. Okay, then we need to do a roll call vote. Is there any order that we need to go with?
Just ask who you're voting for.
Okay.
Roll call, which is who you're voting for.
Okay, do a roll call, and let each arm and tail do they vote.
Alderman John Doug.
Morgan.
I'm Bill Costner.
Costner.
I'm Freddie Gray.
Morgan.
Alderman Kathy Hope.
Costner.
I'm Kenny Morgan.
I'll go with Kenny Morgan.
I'm ready for Kenny Morgan to Bill Costner.
Okay. That fills the one position. Now, to, for the second position, I'm gonna make a recommendation for Johnny Bug, and the floor's open for other nominations.
And again, I'm gonna nominate Bill Costner.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, Janine, one more time.
I'm for Kenny Morgan.
Boo.
I'm Freddie Gray.
Boo.
Alderman Kathy Hope.
Costner.
I'm Bill Costner.
Costner.
I'm John Doug.
Bug.
That's three for John Doug, two for Bill Costner.
Execute the two positions now. It's a concern whether it's a two-year term.
We'll determine how long the term is.
Okay. Okay, the next item C is the appointment of the vice mayor, and I would recommend the council, and I have done this before. council, and I have done this before, that the person in the past, there's nothing in any form of paperwork that indicates that the top vote getter is the Vice Mayor. The Vice Mayor must be selected by a majority vote of the council. But in the history that I've been here, and what I can remember from before my time, the council appointed the number-one vote getter for this position. So, I'll leave the council with that to make a motion on that.
Are you nominating Bill?
Well, that would be my recommendation, since that's been done in the past. That's the way we've always done it. I've never known it to be any other way.
So, you are nominating?
Yes, I'll nominate.
He got the most votes, I second it.
You... Well, we need to see if there's any other nominations.
Any others? Okay, all those in favor indicate a saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no? I hear none.
Now, let's get this down there.
Okay, item D, the Police Civil Service Board.
That was for the police department. If I'm not mistaken, they've already chose their person.
Okay.
Jabow has been reelected, correct?
Yes.
The police department does. That's their selection.
This is for announcement only.
Right. Okay, item seven, the reports and committees has been placed on the agenda. Don Hirst.
I wasn't able to attend the workshop I had put down Monday as usual, and the city council moved the workshops, so I apologize for that. Hopefully, it will be on Tuesday preceding the city council meeting in the future, so we plan to be there. I'm just gonna cover a couple of things. What I'm handing out, I actually covered that last, so if you just kind of put it kind of inside temporarily. I just want to do a couple of updates, and if you've got any questions about anything I, you know, I'm updating, or any other question, I'd be glad to answer, obviously. I wanted to do a real quick update on the Ace Building. I've had some questions about that. Obviously, we sold the building to a company who's doing quite a bit of redevelopment on that site out there. If you've driven by there, you see that the roof is off the building, the side's off the building. Of course, the weather, as it is, we kind of had to have a little bit of stoppage right now, it was a little too cold to do some work. But the plan is right now to refinish all the entire concrete, floorwork, to then repaint all the steel that's standing out there. That's roughly 170,000 square feet on 34 acres. The purchaser has looked at adding some additional square footage potentially out there. If you look at the way the building's built in an aisle, there's another 60,000 square feet that can be added in that aisle to fill that space up. We've also had Norfolk Southern Railroad out there looking. We've looked at adding two additional spurs that come into the property. So, we're trying to move that forward. The folks that bought the building are moving forward on it and making some good progress. I mean, it's gonna look like a brand-new building out there when everything's finished. Again, freshly refinished, newly painted, new size, new roof. The big difference you'll see in that building, both sides will eventually have dock doors for incoming outgoing, because we will see that as a, as a distribution center more so than anything else. So, that will be really the focus of that building.
Don, I have a question.
Yes?
Do you have any idea of the completion date or what's scheduled?
Well, we originally sold the building, we were looking at roughly six months. It depends on the weather situation. I mean, they're losing days right now, but as soon as the weather gets, we'll be back out there.
When did we settle, you know?
Closing date, should you remember? September, October? I'd have to go back to the, to the press and look at the date. I don't remember the exact date, but it was, we'd expected the building to be finished after the first of the year, so...
And can you say how many people they're gonna employ or close to?
Not yet. It's, you know, there's still, there's still some negotiation going on. In fact, they're working with more than one company, so we, we had a target, but that target is not confirmed. So, we're still working to see if that can be worked out.
Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to bring up, for the last, also for the last couple of months, we've been working to do a new flood study for the Newport Industrial Park. This is a result of what happened in Nashville back in May. You're very aware of the flood that took place out there, Nashville flooded places that weren't even flood zone areas. Since that happened, a lot of the insurance companies that carry coverage for a lot of manufacturers and other businesses around the state are coming in to look at some of the flood issues. And again, we got our terms, so they've looked at some of our manufacturers out there. We've had conversations with our manufacturers. We've worked closely with Newport Utilities. We went through, also had TVA come in and help do some assessment for us. So, what we're doing right now, we went through an RFQ process. We sent letters to 18 different engineering firms. We had nine of those companies respond. We've gone through and interviewed the ones we looked at. We made the decision to go with McGill and Associates to do a flood study. We're in the process of getting all that scheduled. We're looking at spending for Phase One, about $40,000 to update that. And the reason being, obviously, when you look at a FEMA map, it's really an insurance map. We want to make sure that our manufacturing companies and our businesses out there can get the best flood insurance rate that we can get them. There are questions about what the flood elevation actually is out there in the industrial park, so we're having to do a new study to find out exactly where we're staying. So, Phase One's gonna run roughly $40,000. We will be employing the most up-to-date technology. You'll see, probably somewhere in the next 60 days, you'll see a helicopter flying over that part of the county they're using your IDAR, which is the most effective way of measuring the topography in that area. So, you'll see that going on, and we hope to have that answer for our manufacturers, hopefully by the end of March, early part of April. We're trying to move as quickly as we can to get some answers there. So, we'll have a new flood map for the industrial park. So, and we're moving forward on that. The last thing, unless there's any questions about, about the industrial park. And again, unfortunately, our industrial park, the entire thing, is in flood plain, so we're, you know, we're being forced to do this because we're not in a choice. The third thing I wanted to discuss, and then open for questions. The handout I gave you about a month ago at one of the county commission meetings, we've started doing presentations on specific things that the counties had interest in. One of the things that we talked about, and this goes back to last fall, we were talking about economic development, and specifically where we thought we'd be and where we thought some of our opportunities were. Obviously, and the way we look at the future, we look at manufacturing jobs, we look at industrial jobs, at distribution jobs, we look at all other jobs as well. We look at the service sector, we look at retail, everything. One of the things that came up, there was a comment made during our budget situation last year, that someone didn't want us to have retail jobs. When I grew up in retail, I personally liked retail jobs. I think it makes a great deal of sense. And for three reasons. Number one, if you have a retail job, you have a job. A retail establishment pays property taxes, and they collect sales tax. So, what I wanted to do on the first sheet, I've actually given you a TCA. Now, it'll take place in the train, just a moment. Excuse me. So, the TCA that I've handed you actually said, tells us how we distribute and split sales tax. And, you know, roughly, if you look at number one, one-half the sales tax collected in the county goes to the school system. So, again, when we talk about sales, you know, when we talk about retail sales jobs, retail sales industry, and that entire sector, it's important because it does three things. The other thing it does is, you know, half the sales tax we collect goes to our school system. So, again, as we talk about economic development, generally, we talk about education. You know, again, the more qualified, the more trained, the more educated our school systems deliver products to us, because we sell Newport and Cock County, it's better. Again, it makes it easier for you if you've got money that you put into the school system. One of the things we're trying to do, if you look at Newport and Cock County, the other thing we talked about, sales tax leakage. If you leave the county to buy an item, and the sales tax is paid in another county, then you're supporting that county's school systems. So, we, we're actually out there trying to recruit, obviously, you know, retail sales operations, because number one, it provides jobs, it provides property taxes, it provides sales tax, it supports our school system, it keeps people at home. Now, if you look at page two, I just did a real quick recap, and these are numbers that are, I won't say they're 100% accurate, but they're darn close, because we're just using them for, for represent attendance. And our idea was to take the Newport Town Center up on the hill that includes Lowe's and the retail area up there. I did not include restaurants in this figure, so I only looked at retail sales, non-restaurant. Up there right now, if you take Lowe's and the shopping center, we're looking at roughly 140,000 square feet. It's doing roughly $225 per square foot in sales, which gives us a total of $31,500,000 a year in total sales. And then we look at the sales tax. The total sales tax, down to three-quarters, is a little over $3 million. The state portion of sales tax is a little over $2.2 million, and then it's broken down in the state budget by five-and-a-half percent. General sales tax, 1% debt service, and a half percent for BEP funding. So, again, as we go to the state, we look at dollars either through ECD or TDOT. They collect money in different buckets, and so therefore, we look at where they put the money. The reason we did this, we'd also talked about, there were some issues about the exit 438, some of the development we planned out there. If you take the same numbers that we're doing on the hill already, and you apply it to Phase One, which was 500,000 square feet of space out there, the same numbers. So, again, this is not make-believe, it's real numbers. If you look at doing $225 per square foot for the first 500,000 square feet developed, then you're looking at total sales of $112 million. That would generate, in the total sales tax, a little, almost $11 million in sales tax. The 7% will go to the state, that's 7.8 million. The local sales tax collected would be a little over $3 million. If you go back and remember, we also, this past spring, got a lot of help from the state and from the General Assembly, and that they passed a resolution allowing us to use the 5.5% general sales tax to pay for what we spend out there. So, if we build roads, if we put water and sewer in place, we can keep the 5.5% general sales tax to pay for what we invest. So, if you look at the line that's highlighted in yellow, that 5.5%, once we get the development up and running and collecting sales tax, and we get to start collecting sales tax when the first, very first certificate of occupancy is delivered. So, from day one, we don't have a waiting situation. So, once we get 500,000 square feet up, you look at the 5.5%, there's a little over $6 million in sales tax we get to keep that would normally go to the state, and we can keep that total number until we pay off any investment we make on behalf of the city and county. Now, right now, if you look at that development, the exit itself is on the status report for TDOT. I think I've handed that out before. The interchange is right now estimated to cost $16 million. That's being paid by the federal government. We made our investment years ago, so it's done. We are looking at water and sewer investment. As you well know, we're working with Newport Utilities. We've got water down to about the armory, I guess, Ron. Is it complete now?
They lack to 300 feet.
Okay. So, we've got water down to there. We have an ARC grant we're working with to put sewer down to there. So, our investment will be from roughly the armory, where we'll build a new road over to the exit, put water and sewer roads. So, the status report says the federal government's paying for the exit. Also, if you look at the status report, TDOT is paying for the first 1.9 miles of ride away. We're estimating a little bit less than five miles needed, they're paying for two of them. So, when we look at our estimates for roads and for water and sewer, we're still about $10 million. But if you look at what's coming, you know, $10 million can be repaid fairly quickly. And we did the exact same thing we're doing here that we did with Lowe's and paid that back. And right now, you know, that debt is about $850,000 left at the bank, and it's collecting the property taxes alone, a little over $350,000 a year. So, it'll be paid off in three years. So, these are some of the things we're pursuing. We've got to go to the Industrial Development Board to move this forward. But again, we think for, obviously, for job creation, for property tax growth, for sales tax growth, for our education system, you know, this is a deal that, again, we desperately need to keep in Newport and Cock County and keep as many sales tax dollars as we can here. And to be quite honest, we want to grow our sales tax and bring people in from other areas to grow sales and grow jobs here. So, those are the three things I had on the agenda. I don't want to take up the entire city council agenda, but I'd be happy to answer any other questions if you've got one for, for me concerning partnership.
Two, and I'll ask a more important question. When do you anticipate it joining in front of the Development Investor Board? And the other is, you stated, any investment that we make that those, that 5.5% will come back to us on? When you say any, is that...
Either qualified, even roads, water, sewer, broadband, sidewalks, you know, there's a complete list that's actually dead, that's actually detailed inside the legislation.
But all of that has to be completed prior to the first certificate of occupancy, right?
No, it actually could be going on at the same time. I mean, it depends on how we put the road, water, you know. In fact, our goal would be to be building buildings as we're building roads and water and sewer. We'd like to open up roads, water, sewer, and businesses at the same time.
The Development Investor Board.
The Industrial Development Board, what we will do is go before them, do what we're doing here, to have a presentation first, and then go back to them and talk about what we're gonna do. We will explain to them, we need a bridge loan to start with, because we have to borrow the money to pay off the debts, and then put a long-term bond in place, or actually go to the bond market, but we don't foresee it being long-term, obviously. You know, our goal is to pay off everything in five to seven years.
How long do you anticipate before you go in front of that board?
We actually talked about going real soon. I mean, we want to go as quickly as possible, just to, just to answer questions, make sure they know what we're doing. It's really an informational meeting, and then we'll go back in front of them, once we get everything, really all the engineering completed, because the engineering's been done as we speak, the environmental assessments, the, all the drives have been done, we're waiting for TDOT to approve that, so we're, we're ready to move. We'd like to move as quickly as possible.
Last one, I'll close. Are we asking Vanderwood about a bond yet, or are we gonna do that?
Well, we won't be doing a bond, because when we do a TIF with him, he has to guarantee his financing. So, he will guarantee the financing on his part. We don't guarantee him. He guarantees himself. So, we're going before the, we will, we will borrow the money to put the infrastructure in, but on the development of the site itself, he has to guarantee that. And that's his, that's his investment in the project. Over and above the land is already purchased. So, no, we will buy it.
But how are we guaranteed that he's gonna do what he's planning to do?
It'll be the same exact situation we had with Lowe's up here. They put their credit rating on the table, they borrowed them in. They stand good for the, for the investment out there.
But my question, even if he does that, and he decides, as an investment group or whatever it is he's in, that he decides not to do that, and we went out and borrowed this money, and obviously done this infrastructure, so, not that it's a bad thing, but going forward, if he's not willing to invest that money and guarantee it that it's gonna happen, then that's where the discussion is. That's the calls I'm getting on, and I, they're worried that Vanderwood is not gonna do what he says he's gonna do, and here we are on a, outreaching to, beyond our means to do this.
Well, and again, we're not going forward between, you know, past year means, because the city and county aren't investing in monies. You know, we're not, you know, the Industrial Development Board is being, you know, we will use his creditworthiness for the, for the bonds that go out there. We don't use ours. So, again, it's just like when, when we borrowed money on, you know, the Newport Town Center, we used the creditworthiness of Lowe's to secure that note. And then in addition to that, the bank will tell you, in this case, we're talking about a redirected sales tax, and we'll wrap a traditional TIF around it. So, therefore, the bank has the first lien on both property tax and sales taxes. So, again, the banks are, you'll find that the banks like this deal, is about as secured as you can get.
Well, how much will the city be liable for? Would we have to sign another?
The city doesn't sign anything.
You don't sign that?
The city is not putting your creditworthiness on the paper.
The sewer and all that is taken care of?
In fact, we'll be borrowing the money, you know, through the Industrial Development Board to do that.
So, the Industrial Development Board will be responsible if something fail through?
In fact, any TIF does not go in front of the city or the county as far as your creditworthiness. It does not impact your loans at all. That's why it's done the way it's done. You know, we're not adding to your debt load in any way, shape, or form.
No, no way.
Has anyone committed to this, to come in then?
Has anyone committed to this, to coming in?
We're still working on some of those conversations. We're still having, we're still having conversations with, you know, we had some, again, some, some targets we worked with early, we're still having those conversations. So, but at this point, we're not committed, because again, they will commit, because they don't see certain things on the ground, they would not commit to a site that doesn't have water and sewer. So, again, it's kind of the chicken and egg situation. But the developer does have specific things he plans to put on the table as well, so it's not, you know, it's not fully speculative in terms of what's gonna be on the ground out there. There are other things being made.
It's only too good.
You know, questions may occur.
Thank you, man. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Don.
Congratulations on doing that. Okay, there's nothing listed under "old business." I'd like to get council to suspend the rules before we start new business. We do have one item of that post reports concerning the resolution to motorized trail grant that the county CLB has already approved, and this is to, to build, to get a grant to build a park for four-wheelers and things of that nature, to have some off-road experience like other, some other counties, other states, and so forth. So, Todd's got a copy of the resolution. Is it, is there a copy deck?
Yes, there is. There's one handed out.
Okay, there's a copy handed out.
I heard that it was internal hold. What if we get a copy of the issue?
All we're giving was just approval.
Just, that work I had, what they're doing on. That's all it is.
We need a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion, second.
Okay, and second, all those in favor indicate the saying yes?
Yes.
Oppose is no. Okay, now, is the, the items on the floor to approve this resolution concerning the motorized trail grant?
Man, I would just like to say that this is an effort on our behalf of City Council and City Newport to show that we are working to form a real relationship with the county and CLB, the New County Mayor and Board, and show support for their efforts in trying to at least go out and develop this program for the county.
Now, what do we need? We need a motion.
Motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make it.
Do we need to read it?
No.
I'll be glad to, but we don't need. Would you do that?
Yes, second there.
It's a resolution number 2011 dash zero two, support of 2011 motorized trail grant. Whereas the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation's recreational trail program is offering grants to local governments designed to enhance motor recreation, trail opportunities, and whereas off-road motorized recreation has become a nationally accepted outdoor activity, which can bring long-term benefits related to economic and community growth, healthy physical outdoor activity for a broad range of ages, physical abilities, and interest, enjoyment, and appreciation for the natural and cultural resources of Cock County, and whereas these grant funds may be used for the acquisition and development, or development only of motorized trails and trailhead facilities, construction of new trails, or maintenance of existing trails, and now, therefore, it is resolved that the City of Newport, Tennessee is in support of the Cock County Legislative Body's authorizing the county mayor to apply for the 2011 motorized trail grant. Now, be it resolved by the City of Newport, Board of Mayor, and Augment on this 13th day of January 2011.
Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Hey, I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate the saying yes?
Yes.
Oppose is no? I hear none. Item A, a consideration of job descriptions.
Mayor, as discussed at the workshop, we're asking to have council authorize the job descriptions, as they've been presented. And in the motion, please put the stipulation that the job descriptions will not be modified unless they come back before this board.
Okay. Any discussion, or do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate the saying yes?
Yes.
Oppose is no? I hear none. Item B, the first reading of ordinance 2011 dash zero one, the personnel policy. That copy is not in here, but it has a length of, I think everyone's a wire of it. So, what's your pleasure?
We need, we do need to read the caption of the ordinance. Anyone have a copy of it?
I didn't bring my copy in here with me.
We need to read that into the record. I think our charter requires us to at least read the caption of an ordinance into the record before we vote on it.
The game is gonna get them off. Gary, if I go waiting on her, can we move on and do item C and D?
Sure.
No. We'll, we'll go on to item C while she's getting copies of that to be read. Resolution, resolution 2011 dash zero one, CDBG 2011.
That's not necessary to be read into the record, Mayor. That is a resolution on the community block grant.
Okay. Do we have any discussion or motion to approve item C?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate the saying yes?
Yes.
Oppose is no? I hear none. So, let's move back to item B, and Gary's gonna read the caption.
I'll read the caption. That's ordinance number 2011 dash zero one, City of Newport, Tennessee. It's an ordinance to establish personnel rules and regulations for employees of the City of Newport, Tennessee. These rules and regulations shall serve as the primary source document of personnel policies.
Okay. Any discussion or a motion to approve on the first reading?
I'm not the motion, Mayor.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate the saying yes?
Yes.
Oppose is no? I hear none.
Of course, Mayor, we need a public hearing on that at the February meeting, and it will be published in the paper announcing the proposal for the ordinance, and that'll be at 5:30 on Tuesday, February 1st. Oh, excuse me, February 8th. February 8th. February 1st is the workshop, Tuesday.
Okay, item D is roadblock, Little League Cock County Chiller softball. You have that information in there? And I assume that's been tall regulations, doesn't it?
Yes, Mayor, this is under the umbrella of the Cock County Recreation Department.
Okay, now, have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Walter, are you over this? Is this fair? Is it your?
I don't want it submitted, yes. I'll be involved.
Okay, we, we don't want these kids running up food city, collecting money. I mean, it, it happened in, in a roadblock. I don't care what they say, if they're not old enough, they, they've danced across the street to get the people to pay for them. We don't want them walking. We had a problem before, and you gotta let them play it, okay? That's all the problem I have with that. We don't, we don't want that to happen.
It's, it's the eighteen, and that more, more of those, some of them are under eighteen or something, more of the city or streets instead of the.
I'm not here with you. I thought I. All those in favor indicate the saying yes?
Yes.
Oppose is no? I hear none. Nothing that will be, nothing, uh.
Mayor, uh, it's technicality, that's not within the six-month period.
The thirty-five minute.
I've seen it, I've known it, thirty-five minutes. Couple of days short, so.
I'll make a motion to waive the rules and approve this roadblock.
I'll second it.
All those in favor indicate the saying yes?
Yes.
Oppose is no? I hear none. Any comments from citizens? Yes, come to the podium, please. Five minutes, you'll wait. Yes, state your name for the record, sir.
Randy Cash. Excuse me?
Danny Cashin.
Randy Cashin.
Randy Cashin, okay, Randy.
You taught me when I was little. I do, okay? You don't.
Okay, no, that's, that's important.
Danny Expecker, he's doing the hackers, he's out right at the streets department, everybody done, all right with the police department and everything else. The only concern I've got in the county right now, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna get out in a lot more weekends, this is my first meeting. I got messed up a little bit of water going down the road. Shouldn't have. I wanna help my children. And what I'm saying to my children, it ain't her children, or her, or nobody else, it's our children. I would like the City of Newport to get something that they can do. Because, now, I'll ask you, when I grew up in Del Rio, I didn't have nothing to do. And you know it? What for children got to do? And if I can help the children, I'm gonna help. I'd like the City of Newport to do something. Don't let it bring nothing big. This helped the young ones. What they got to come up into? I was raising them, yeah. What? When I raised them, what? You killed a chicken? You ain't, you don't believe that, do you? Oh, yeah, I've been there, done that. Help, helping young ones. Put all that stuff aside. Thank God, have first some message meant to them, that I've been here before. If we can't help each other, who can we help? You see what I'm saying? It ain't dog, it's dog. It ain't, ain't nothing like that. Do what you want to. And if you think I'm down here for the wrong reason, then you're wrong. You're definitely wrong. And if you just don't believe I'm wrong, that's the law. I, the records wasn't saying, if you think I'm wrong, I might die tomorrow. But I don't want that story. And that man has, not my kids.
Thank you, man. And I would, that, that's good statements, and that's where all our concern needs to be. And, and I'm sure you're aware that, you know, the parks and rec is all the time doing some stuff to get things together for kids, the partnership, the unity in the community, they do a lot of wonderful things for kids. It's an ongoing thing, and we just need to push harder. The more we can get, the better off we're gonna be for our kids, and I appreciate your comment.
No, I think that.
Thank you, Randy. Anyone else? Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Anybody oppose? Thank you.